That we will use the, under the circumstances, depending on, you know, the situations that may come up for vacations, sick, leave, and that kind of a thing. Call the question? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Were there two noes?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Munson and Mr. Tripp voted against it. Okay, we have the item number four, which is the approval of the resolution to notify property, property sales. Someone go through that, please.
Move on parcel six. If I can see. Five, one, three, two, four, odes at the hearing for the tenth day of June, ten fifteen.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We have item five, which is the approval of the liquor license.
Move on the liquor license for second course.
Discussion.
No, it's Sloan. It was just put in there by mistake. If you look through it, it talks-
Yeah, it's got hand, and hand Sloan.
Sloan.
Is this Sloan on our-
Yes.
Agenda?
Yeah, I had a discussion with one of the board members, the guy that was going to do it, had a license, and he decided not to do it, so the committee had to get the license. I think we've already done one for the guy that was gonna run it.
Okay. Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Social Services, Payers Putman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The Justice Assistance Grant, historically annual type of award if the feds have money for it. We have to split that money versus City of Sioux City. We split it fifty-fifty. So those are the breakdowns that you have before you in that MOU for the city. That's a requirement for us to be able to apply.
Okay. Is there a motion on the jag grant?
Move it.
Second? There is. Any discussion? Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First item we have on the agenda is the approval of the contract for our CF Industries' CF Drive project.
Second?
February twenty-five thousand, four fifteen.
You gotta be quick, Mark.
I'm sorry. It's Tuesday and feels like Monday.
Any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item number two.
Next item I had was some discussion on a alternative route that has been requested by CF Industries over access to the plant. They requested that we review, and I prepared an estimate for it. Right now, we're using, as you all know, two-hundred-twenty-fifth, two-hundred-and-thirty-fifth streets in Allison Avenue. Between the two roads, loaded and unloaded trucks are going by ten homes. They have requested that we take a look at extending two-hundred-fourtieth Street, which is a road runs east-west from where it actually dead ends in two-hundred-and-thirty-fifth Street at the west end here where the pipeline project is being undertaken. Runs along mile-long access, runs past the mile-long access, the BNR property there, and terminates at the, at its east end in Allison Avenue. What they've requested that we take a look at is to extend two-hundred-fourtieth Street east from Allison to Andrew, and then Andrew north to two-thirty-fifth. Doing this would bypass pretty much all of the homes out there. We have the capability of widening this out to about thirty-two foot wide top with an adequate base underneath of it where it would be a more truck-friendly route than the older sixty-six foot wide roads that, that we've been working with. But it's not without cost. It's about sixty-four hundred linear feet of, of new roadway essentially when it's all said and done. There is a rental house out there. I've heard different, that it's unoccupied or occupied. We haven't contacted the landowners at this point. But I did go through and prepare an estimate. We used some of the prices that were bid and the contract that you all just approved. We used the current price for right-of-way, and this would be new right-of-way for the stretch of two-hundred-fourtieth Street, plus right-of-way to take Andrew Avenue from the current sixty-six feet wide to a hundred-and-twenty feet wide, which would give us enough room to build a road with proper slopes and, and get, get a wider finished top on it. This doesn't include any dust treating, any improvement methods that we use. One of the things that I've looked at if we were going to do a road like this would be to seal coat it. Over time, that would give us a two-to-three-year dust-free surface. It would be something that would take winter treatment better with, with salt and sand placed on it. It would be a more durable surface than that. I think it would be about a break-even with the calcium chloride that we're currently using. Now, I'm figuring a fairly heavy rock base out here with this one. I'm looking at using what's called a cam base road. I've used this for quarries, other roads where we have heavy truck traffic. Consists of about six inches of core stone base with four inches of finer granular chokestone type material up on top that you can either seal coat or dust treat at that point. Whether we use that type of base or we, we're looking at some chemical treatments on the current roads we're using to help stabilize them and make them stronger for natural wear. We didn't pursue this. I think it's gonna be about the same amount of materials whether we use a cam stone base or some other stone base. You're still looking at trying to build a road that is, is truck-ruined. I've heard that the images it came through on SCAM was a little bit dark, so I prepared a new one for you today, so that, yeah, I'm sorry.
Hello, Mark.
Yeah. When you reproduce a copy of a SCAM, it, it doesn't always come out as well as what we like, so I, I shot some new ones here this morning.
So-
We're involving, I believe it's seven landowners out there.
We're, we're gonna be taking their fields? Is that what's gonna happen?
We'd be coming through CF as the, if you look in that first, you can see the property lines on this. In that first quarter-mile, that's owned on both sides of the road by CF Industries. CF Industries own those two smaller, roughly ten-acre parcels north of the two-hundred-fourtieth Street extension. They also own the first quarter-mile south. The triangular parcel that you see as you're coming into Andrew on the south of the center line of the proposed road is owned by Jolene, as is the north quarter-mile. Jolene Glass owns the next half-mile going north on the east side of the road. And then three other landowners own those other forty-acre parcels.
So we'd have to purchase-
Taking about one-point-two acres off of every forty as we go north, and more up at the intersections, because one of the problems with the Andrew intersection with two-thirty-fifth right now is it's a very tight radius. The heavy trucks would not make it around that corner without improvement. We've already got a hangover the edge of two-thirty-fifth and Allison, and they kinda roll through that ditch a little bit when we get a particularly long load or a low boy that's bringing in equipment. We need to make those quite a bit more flared. I figure in a two-hundred-foot flare at each of those. That comes up to about six tenths of an acre in every one of those corners.
Do you know if this is in the, this is in the Tiff District, Mark?
It is not. If you'll recall, the, the Tiff District, actually, the two-mile limit for, for Sioux City actually gets down to where it is south of the end of the public road on Allison. You know, and if you're, you know, that's, that's in the buffer area that CF owns. I, I think that roughly the Tiff line, if I remember right now, and I think John is in here, David's here, I think it's almost down where the pipeline comes across, isn't that right?
Okay.
So everything from there south would be eligible, if everything on this north end is not.
Okay.
I, I don't really need a decision today, but I put discussion and decision, so you have the option if you felt this was something you wanted us to pursue. Best, best possible timeline, we'd be looking at late summer build on and getting it done in about November. I can't guarantee that we'd be a lot better off with a, with a new road in the spring, because you know, it takes, it takes time and a good freeze-thaw period for a road to really stabilize and settle down, so we could have some issues early on in the spring with the-
Well, you know, this is one of the options that we talked, I did anyway, along with yourself, and also with Dennis, with the, Nick DeRose, the plant director out there a few weeks ago, and, but we didn't have any figures to go, you know, with, with this particular discussion. So we do have the figures here now, and we'd have to, to me, the crucial thing here is how are we, how are we gonna fund the thing? Right now, I don't believe that you have, you know, the capacity to, you know, to fund the thing fully, or we do, so I think that we need to probably have more discussions with the, with the plant manager down there, ourselves, and look at some, some additional options, if you, if you will. I don't know what those options are, but I think that this warrants some additional discussion. Does this, does this take, this takes the pressure off of, off of two-hundred-and-thirty-fifth to going, going west, then, doesn't it? Once, if, if this is put in?
This would take, this would take the pressure off the areas where we-
And also Allison Avenue.
Correct, yes. You know, it would be their intention to direct traffic this way. If you recall, the first house on two-hundred-and-thirty-fifth, it actually might show up in that area. Let me see if it did get pulled in. Yeah, it does. If you look just, just to the left side of the two-hundred-and-thirty-fifth Street, you'll see a darker patch. That's where that first house is on two-thirty-fifth.
Right.
You know, if we, if we're able to build this wide enough, we could be able to utilize this road both coming and going. Two-thirty-fifth is, from here east is probably the widest gravel road segment that we have of most there out there. You've all driven it one time or another, and again, there's really nothing there between Andrew and, and Orneal except the railroad tracks.
Now, would they be using this even after the completion of the construction of their entire, entire project?
What, what we've been told is that periodically, every four to five years, they do a refit on the plant. Where they take the plant down for two to three weeks, they haul in some new equipment that, and do some replacements in that period. But if, unless another project comes into this area, and, and it is in Sioux City's long-range plan for improvement, even looking out to this area, all of these roads we're looking at, with the exception of the new segment in Andrew Avenue, are proposed in the city's twenty-five-year plan for eventual improvement in paving. So it's likely that something's going to happen out there. Some days, the new Sioux City community used to grow, or Woodbury County was successful in economic development efforts. But as far as after this is done, these roads aren't likely to see this used unless another project comes along. It, it's a good deal of money to spend on a road that duplicates services there, to be frank. It does, it does take a good deal of pressure off of the landowners. That would be the advantages. Again, disadvantages is basic ground out of production. We, we end up with roads that aren't gonna be used at that level, having another project.
But coming out of that plant, they would be able to, they would be using this road rather than using Allison Avenue all the way up to two-hundred-and-thirty-fifth?
That, you know, Allison, north of two-fortieth and up to two-twenty-fifth would then become an alternate or an emergency route. I'm sure we would still see some employees using it for their daily commute, but I think if this were built, and the indication we got from Nick DeRose, when we talked to him, is that they would use this as their primary route for getting loads in and out, for the construction loads coming in and out. Now, that being said, when they did the big pour, they had loads coming in two-twenty-fifth and south on Allison, coming from those northern ready-mix plants. They had loads coming from the ready-mix plant that's at the Floyd River facility, coming in two-thirty-fifth and south. So I can't say that when they have that next big pour, which will be the floor, I think, for their, for urea storage room, I think that's the next biggest job that one's coming along.
When, when is that supposed to occur?
I was wanting to say it was August, September period.
Look at this.
We might not even have this built at that point in time.
But you say this road's gonna be, it's gonna be wider?
I would be, you know, as long as we're building a road and we're not-
It's gonna be more heavy duty?
I would be looking at, what I designed here as far as template and doing this estimate was a thirty-six foot wide finished dirt top with three-to-one slopes, which would be our paved road standard. Our finished top, by the time we get the rock built up-
Right.
-and, and built to a road template, would be thirty-two foot outside of shoulder to outside of shoulder.
What are, what are they normally now?
Most of these roads out here, twenties, twenty-six to twenty-eight feet wide.
Are they? Okay.
We're, we're up to thirty. If you wanna kind of have a mental picture, if you've been out there and seen the pullouts, we're about thirty-two foot wide where those pullouts are. This would be on par with County Road B-53, which is two-hundred-and-eighty, eightieth Street that we paved two years ago. So you'd be looking at a very similar top width, except with a surface treatment as opposed to a, a full-blown pavement. But this would be graded ready to pave should the next project come along.
Well, you have the luxury on two-hundred-and-forty to do it right.
And Andrew as well, because we're really, other than Mr. Jolene's salvage yard, there really isn't a lot going on in this area while we're, we're looking to build it. I, I've only had some brief conversations with Mr. Jolene's family. I haven't talked to any of the other property owners out here.
Well, this road wouldn't be completed according to you until November.
That would be about as moving everything just as quickly as could be done, yes.
So you'd get about twelve-month use out of it for CF?
When it's all said and done.
Yeah, for a million dollars. That just, we don't, we haven't had that much or many problems down there. And with the pullouts, that's alleviated a lot of concern.
Yeah, I think it's alleviated most of the concerns. I'd rather sink some of this money into existing roads frankly, but again, it was requested that we take a look at this and, and discuss it. The, the challenge we have on our existing roads is we really can't take them down to make them wider. We don't, we don't have the luxury of time.
And that's the thing, if we'd done about this a couple of years ago, we, we'd have a little bond nature to do it anyway, so.
Right. Had we anticipated even at RISE project time that we would need to, we would have this level of material coming in, and, you know, we had very short time to turn in that grant, and I, I had no anticipation we were looking at anything quite this massive for use of the existing gravel road system. We put our, we put our bankroll into building a new planned road.
I, I don't know where we're gonna come up with the funds to do this.
Great.
That's where I'm at.
I agree with you. I don't know where we're gonna come up with the funds.
Can we have some discussion with, we can send this plan to Mr. DeRose and Rouge, and then we'll have another meeting with him, and he, he may have some idea too, some input on it, before we slam the door on it anyway, and then bring it back for discussion once we get some additional information. What does that sound like?
That's fine with me.
I, I haven't sent this on to them yet at this point in time, George. I finished this up Friday, and, and, you know, it is, it needed to be brought to you folks first at once.
Right, I appreciate that.
Yep, I agree.
I'll try to get something set up with him either this week, yeah? Running kinda short, but if he's, if he's in town anyway, and, or early part of next week.
I, I think the only idea I'd have any big issues is Friday is Hunter Canyon's meeting.
Oh, that's right.
That'd be the only conflict you'd have for this week?
During those regular days, you know, we have-
Okay, so we'll scratch on Friday.
Public safety meeting for our, our, our growing Sioux land pass group, but you know, that would be my big conflict for this week.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, appreciate it. So no decision will be made on that today. Item number eight is hearing of any individual or group wishing to make a presentation on an item not on the agenda.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Here to ask for another clarification. On Sunday, I believe it was Sunday, that there was an article in the Journal that concerned Just wanted to ask about, get a clarification. This has to do with the nonprofits that receive funding by the county. A few months ago, it was brought up, and I had occasion to visit with Dennis Butler, and he told me that he was putting together a, some sort of plan or procedure to present to the board about the not, nonprofits funding. And an individual came to the board and asked about that here, and voiced his concerns about the way that process was working, and we've had other people voice concerns. But after that meeting, I was talking to that individual, and I told him that Mr. Butler was, had told me that he was gonna present the plan, and I believe you were in there when we talked about that with Mr. Clausen. And, and the message that he got was that, that that would be presented July first, or somewhere around July first. And then, and consequently, I've received calls from different constituents occasionally, and I received one just last week, and I was upset about it. I encouraged her to talk to the board, but I also told her that there was a plan coming forward that was supposed to be presented to the board to talk about this very issue. And just from what I was, when I read the article, and that doesn't mean that it's always the way it comes out in the article, but it appears in the article it was described as a policy change, and it said that there are no changes anticipated. So I just asked him for clarification if, is that plan is still going to come forward, or, because there were a couple quotes from the other board members that felt that, I felt that it was still in play, and it's kinda being deliberated in the, in the paper when it should be deliberated here in the policy change. And so I was just looking for clarification if that is still going to occur, or what I should be telling folks when they call.
Any response to Mr. Gill's question?
Yeah, it's all in the works, and if you're taking the Journal to come up with your questions, Pat, you're really out on a limb.
Well, I, I really don't think so, Mr. Clausen. When the public is getting the impression that-
Right, but that's-
-a policy is being debated-
That's the Journal.
-and it's not coming here. And, and there was a statement, that was Neil, that says George Boykin's initials on it, that appears that there's been a policy change.
You wanna read that line?
Disclose group funding?
Yeah.
Okay.
That has always been disclosed. I don't know where they come up with these kind of things.
I'm not concerned about that, Mr. Clausen.
Yeah, but this is the article you're using.
I'm concerned with, I'm concerned with the quotes that are in it.
It's all in the works.
Is it still gonna come forward? Can I still tell those constituents that asked me that there is a plan that's going to be submitted and discussed and debated here?
Yes, as far as I'm concerned, there is a plan.
That's all I needed to know.
Mr. Trovai, do you wanna make a comment? Give your name, please.
Troy Boss, CDVA president. Got a question. I don't, I had the agenda, but I don't have a copy of your guys' plan for courthouse security that you just approved. Is it-
The job descriptions? The job descriptions?
The job descriptions.
You can certainly get a copy. We have a copy of that.
Yeah, I'd like to get a copy of that.
Yeah, I probably got them. That's got them.
I know our attorneys have requested it, and so far, they haven't received, received one. Couple other comments I'd like to say. How many times have you made an arrest, Mr. Boykin?
I've never made one.
Okay. Citizens arrests. What your attorney is talking about is citizens arrests. How many times have you seen citizens arrest somebody and haul them up to the jail? It doesn't happen, however. They can detain until a deputy gets there, okay?
Correct.
We've sent you letters saying this plan is not gonna work, you're gonna violate our contract. I don't know how you can think hiring a full-time person for court security when our contract talks all about court security is not gonna violate that. We've tried to work with you guys, and as usual, not, not everybody, but there's three of you on this board that it's your way of the highway and won't listen to us, okay? The last several times we've sent letters, we've ended up in arbitration, which you guys know the response to that. We've, we've prevailed. We've tried to avoid it this time. Obviously, again, it's your way of the highway. You can't get along with the sheriff or other department personnel, because once you guys have something on your mind, you don't care, even if the whole area is boldly against it. You guys are gonna push it through. So we'll probably be in arbitration over the deal. It's a big mistake, and I hope, hopefully, nobody gets hurt over your decision today. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Anyone from the board have anything to contribute for the good of the board? Well, I do. I was with Miss Debbie Durham this past weekend, and our economic development director was with her, and she made a tour of Woodbury County and what we were doing in the small towns, and also, we stopped and had lunch at Salix. She asked if we are still interested in, in the development, economic development in, in those small towns, and I said we sure are. And also, what about the mega site? We talked about that. I said that that was not dead, ladies and gentlemen, and she's still willing to, to work with us and help us in that specific area. So she think that, she thinks that things are looking relatively bright for Woodbury County, and she's willing to work with us along with the DOT director and various projects that we're interested in in, in Woodbury County. But Mr. Blazer did give her a tour and spent probably all of Friday morning and afternoon with, with Debbie in letting her know what was going on in Woodbury County, and she's fully behind us.
Well, I think it's great that she took a day out of her busy schedule to, to tour the county, and it's positive for exposure reasons, and I think that's great.
It is good.
That she went out and met all the local leaders and, and threw her support behind efforts, and-
And she complimented us on hiring the McClure firm and, and pulling all that data together so that we have a better picture of, of what's going on in Woodbury County and how we could apply whatever resources we have for new prospective commercial and industrial development for, for the county in the rural area and also in, within the cities. It was a very good, it was a very good morning and afternoon spent with, with our economic development person, so that's all I have. Anything else?
Move to a journey.
Okay, thank you.